There's this discussion regarding the proposed loan order for Britland Park. Since Mr. Pacico is here tonight along with Ed Iacapone, we're gonna have the discussion, but I'm gonna ask that we give this a motion leave to withdraw because in the loan order there appeared to be a problem with some of the language, so the loan order is gonna have to be written up again. So I just want you to be aware of that. So, Mr. Pacico, Mr. Iacapone, Sean, joining us? Is there anyone else?
Yes.
Hi, Jane, welcome. So, Mr. Iacapone, Sean Kadim, Kenny Pacico, and Ms. Di Biaseo, I don't know who wants to start?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to get started tonight with our nice rendition of Britland Park and the proposed artificial surface field. Fall River has quite a few parks and a lot of fields, but unfortunately, because of the amount of use they get, some of them are in disrepair, some of them are almost unusable, and the one park that we have that's in really good shape is Britland. And the reason for that is it's always locked down, it's by permit only, and unfortunately, that's not the best use of that land. So, we decided when the opportunity arose to possibly pursue some grant funding and see if we could make that field more accessible to more people and obviously allow the park to be utilized by the general public more than it is now. Currently, as I said, it's locked down, so no one can walk on the field and use it at all. The proposed field will allow us to have that park open all the time, and then by permit users, games and practices. Currently, that field is only used for games, it's only used when the sun shines, and after some heavy rains, we keep it locked down and no one's allowed to use it. So this will allow any kind of weather usage on the field. I'm gonna ask Jane to give you a little bit of background on the grant and how we got to where we are today.
Thank you, Ken. This grant is called the Parkland Acquisition and Renovation for Communities Grant, formerly known as the Self-Help and Urban Self-Help, you've probably heard of those. The idea, of course, as the name implies, is to make improvements or renovations to parks. So we did apply for the grant, and we were actually awarded the grant in the amount of $500,000. This is not a matching grant. The Department of Conservation Services will reimburse us for up to 70% of the total cost of the project. So actually, there are costs that we proposed that would be included as well as the $500,000 for the actual amount of the grant. There are some other elements of the project as well as the synthetic turf field. In designing the application, we wanted to make sure that it was responsive to the specifications that DCS gave us. So there were some other elements that we included that we'll also be able to do as part of this entire project at Britland Park, one being to improve the area. I don't know if you've, have you all been to Britland Park? Down at the riverfront, there's a large rock that sort of makes for a nice natural landing, and some people in the past have proposed to use that area for boating. It's, you know, accessible right there to the Quichetan River, one of the only places in the city where the river is visible above ground. So we also propose to make some improvements down there at the, right at the waterfront, and to design what would be a watercraft launch area. We also propose to make some slight improvements to the entrance and parking area, particularly the one at Seventeenth Street, that's one of the access points out to Pleasant, the other is Wardell Street, the Wardell Street entrance. We also talked about making some paths a little more accessible by cleaning up some of the brush that's there and perhaps creating some picnicking areas, again, to encourage people to come. So many people that I know who were born and raised in Fall River don't even know of this park, it's sort of tucked away back there behind the new police department, which also, by the way, offers it some protection from vandalism, we're hoping, and such. We also plan to create some interpretive signage, and I'm excited about that project because I'm hopefully going to be working with Al Lima on designing some of the language that is included in that interpretive signage. We're gonna be using the book called A River and Its City, that Al Lima was actually the author of that book. It includes lots of great history about the area, about the river, going back to the Native Americans, talking, you know, about the Industrial Revolution going forward. And we'll probably have some signs that talk about the flora and fauna of the area because it's also rich with those characteristics. And then lastly, the turf field that Ken mentioned, those are the elements of the project, and I think that, you know, if they're all put into place, I think the park will be more desirable and will ultimately be used more by the public and even people from outside the area.
Sean, would you like to add something?
Just as far as the bonding is concerned, a breakdown, what's before the council is an authorization for $875,000. Of that, we're gonna go for a ban, which is a bond anticipation note.
Could you talk into the mic, please?
The bond anticipation note is a short-term bond. We would go into the long-term bond market for our portion of the cost, which is $375,000. So the $500,000 will be the reimbursement from the grant.
Counselor Mitchell.
Just one second, Counselor. If I could just add one thing, and I'm sorry for interrupting, there are a couple of leagues that are involved, that were involved in the grant process, the Fall River Youth Soccer League and the Men's Adult League, the Luso League, and Lassiter League, I'm sorry, and they are going to be involved both in the planning, the execution of this project, and also in the funding. So they plan on putting in some private dollars, possibly in some lighting improvements, and also bleachers and benches for the athletes. So it's just one more piece to this overall project, which will probably flirt with a million dollar number when it's finished.
Thank you, Mr. Pacico. Counselor Mitchell.
Thank you, Ms. Di Biaseo. You stated that we would be getting 70% reimbursement. Would that be the lighting included?
The reimbursement is the $500,000. So however we choose to use that particular piece, it's not a, it's not a, the match, it's not a match grant, so it's a 70-30 split. The city's 30% is the $375,000, and the state's portion, or the grant portion, is $500,000. Any additional funds is in addition to those two numbers. So the lighting and the benches and the bleacher area and any other improvements we make from the private funds will push that number up.
Okay.
So that's not part of the split. The number that we're working with is 875?
875.
Yes.
Okay. Who would pay, where would we get the money for the additional monies if we needed additional monies for the million dollars, up to a million dollars?
Well, we're not, we're not going to spend more than that on the city side. The city's side, the city's entire contribution is the 375.
Okay.
So anything above that would be coming from private sources. It will not be borrowed money or city funds.
Okay. So it'll be totally private monies that'll be coming in?
Yes.
Okay, now, Council President mentioned that there was a problem with the way it was written, the loan order?
Yes, and last week-
Explain what happened.
Sure. Last week, I, last meeting, I'm sorry, I submitted two documents. One was a resolution, which the council approved, and the second was a document. It was a canned stock document from, that came with the park grant, and unfortunately, I sent that in here. It shouldn't have been sent in as it was. We needed to add some language, some city language into that. So that's the reason why we're withdrawing that.
Okay, so next meeting, we'll have that, and it'll be ready to go.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll yield.
Counselor Kilby.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I love the rendition, congratulate everyone involved. I guarantee you that this is not gonna be underutilized. It's a wonderful location. I believe there's a soccer field there now, Ken, correct?
Yes.
And it's proven true, when we, when you put a synthetic field in, the initial cost obviously is a lot more expensive than a regular field, but proof in the pudding, if you go up to Durfee High School, that field in the long run is gonna save the school department money. You don't have to do the seeding, you don't have to do the cultivation, as long as the rules are followed with regard to refreshments and, you know, gum and different things, these fields last a long, long time, and they're gonna be greatly enjoyed by the city. So, I mean, a project like this just makes me proud to live in Fall River, and I would hope the only caution, again, not caution, a suggestion, is the access probably should be limited, should be fencing around there, because if it's just left open without any fencing, you may see people walking their dogs, you may see, be used inappropriately in a short period of time, it's not, you know, gonna last as long as it could. So that's the only suggestion I'd make. But congratulations to all involved, and I'm excited about the project. Thank you. I yield, thank you, Mr. President.
If I could, Counselor, the fencing doesn't show on that. The fencing is currently up, it's going to stay up. The one thing we cannot do is lock the field down using this funds, we're not able to do that. So it will be accessible, however, the fencing will be there, as it is now.
And it's right behind the police station.
Exactly. Exactly, and that's the only gated side facing the police station.
Very much. I yield.
Counselor in seat number three, Counselor Dennis.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanna say that I think, as Counsel Kilby mentioned, this is a really terrific asset for the city. I think it demonstrates the value of having a good grant writer here in the city like Jane Di Biaseo, and how that good grant writer in cooperation with other city departments, and we can get this kind of money in the city, and we can do these kinds of projects. It puts, represents a lot of value for the city, and it's, I'm sure it's gonna be a real good asset going forward. Just a quick question, Mr. Pacico, general public leagues, tournaments, gonna be available for everybody, and if so, how, times are, you know?
Yeah, currently, all of our fields in the city, there may be a couple of exceptions, are permitted fields. So at the beginning of the season, they would approach the park board, gather their permits, and this will be done in the same fashion, that leagues will be able to use it. However, there will be certain times left aside for general public use. So people can request to use these fields, and the two leagues that are involved and could be possibly involved in that, are the funding, are fully aware of this, that this is not exclusive rights, you know, to a field, that they will have the majority of the time on the field as far as leagues go. But we've permitted, in the past, we've had high schools use the field, JV teams, both JV and varsity, both of our fields, the Father Travasso and this field, and I don't expect that to change. I think there will be times when other people will approach it. And again, we'll use the same rules that we use with the Little League fields, that if it's for city residents, okay? If a league wants to come in that's predominantly city children, adults, then it's fine. If it's going to be leagues from other towns that wanna use the field, then we'll have to use some caution and see just what the roster makeup is, and give preference to those who are paying for the, you know, for the bulk of the work and paying taxes in the city. However, $500,000 of this is Commonwealth money.
Is this conducive to, as I said, tournament play at all? I mean, tournaments bring in a lot of people, and they bring in a lot of dollars, I mean, to local business. I'm just curious if this is a facility that will accommodate a tournament?
It will be. The parking in the facility is, I wanna say it's between 80 and 90 cars, and obviously, Wardell Street is predominantly businesses, there's no residents there. The area is completely surrounded by businesses, so we do have parking available and very, in close proximity to some restaurants and eating establishments. So it is conducive to tournaments, and because it's an artificial surface, we don't have to worry about cancellations because of weather, we don't have to worry about overusing the field. It's basically kept up with a maintenance vehicle that just, you know, goes over it and cleans it. So it is conducive to constant play.
That's good. So there's some economic benefit that goes along with it, and hopefully through local businesses, we can recover some of the money at some point.
Yes.
I yield, thank you.
Counselor in seat number one, Counselor Kamara.
Madam President, Mr. Pacico, I haven't seen any restrooms. Do we need to put restrooms there, or is there-
We have a, we have a field house there that has bathrooms already in it.
And it's sufficient for the-
And the size will be determined if we have to do any further work. There's quite a bit of, that's a good-sized building, and that was recently renovated, so I think we're in very good shape there with the facilities.
Good. With that, I yield, thank you.
Counselor in seat number five, Counselor Mayoza.
Thank you, Madam President. I echo my colleague's sentiments, excellent job. I have two quick questions. Counselor Kilby had mentioned that these fields last a long time. Can we put a number to that? What is years?
I wanna, I wanna say that I've talked to quite a few people in the turf industry over the last five months. It's a 10-year warranty, 24/7. So, it, just to give you an idea of what they're saying, and then it's not a complete redo, you know, there are portions that can be replaced, and the entire field, obviously. If there's a damaged piece, it's not ripping up the whole field. It is, it is part of, you know, a maintenance program that we would, we would probably purchase along with the, with the product.
So you anticipated my next question, maintenance on a field like this?
Right. There's a vehicle that can be towed by a trailer, by a tractor, small lawnmower, and it basically shuffles the surface, cleans the surface, more or less rakes it, keeps it clean. It's, it'll be on that particular maintenance program that is suggested by the manufacturer, and then the manufacturer will come in and do seam checks while, under warranty, and then extended warranties can be purchased so that we can continue this. It's, the, we're not sure on the company that we will be using yet when we go out to bid for that particular piece. However, as a surface at Durfee, it gets an awful lot of wear, and as long as it's maintained, as long as you do the maintenance, you know, if something happens, you take care of it right away, you are, you have a lot of life in that field. I can tell you that the field was, this field, I think, was redone in 2005. Cost was $200,000 at the time, you know, a quarter of the way there of purchasing this field. The field needs to be redone right now. We have some areas where we've taken out the grass and put in artificial surfaces at the Goldmouths. Both of those, that was done, I wanna say, four years ago, three years ago. So the city is spending those dollars, although we don't pay for our water if we had to, you know, we would have that expense, the reseeding, the rolling every year that we do on that field before we start. So there's a lot of items, not counting the grass cutting, that we do every year that we won't be doing with this particular field.
Is it possible, you spoke of clubs, to have them contribute to the maintenance? Is that something?
I think they're very, very enthusiastic about what's going on here, and in hopes that there's possibly, you know, other fields to come at some point, someday, somewhere. So I think that they would, would be, as the Little Leagues throughout the city and the softball leagues do, they're willing to contribute, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Pacico. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Thank you all for giving us such a presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number two on the agenda is with Mr. Pacico regarding street sweeping. Mr. Kadim?
Thank you.
Mr. Pacico was asked to put together a quick presentation with regards to the cost associated with getting another street sweeper for the city, and possibly also a timeline and a plan for those street sweepers to go out and actually clean the streets. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Pacico for the presentation.
Counselors, I, I think I gave everyone two, two packets, one with the street sweeping pilot program as the heading, and the second one with a picture of a proposed sweeper option. Both of these, both of these items, again, are proposals for you to, to take a look at. As I spoke to Counsel Mayoza on the street sweeping, it's very difficult in Fall River to sweep streets when cars are parked on both sides, 'cause we're sweeping the middle of the road where it's not dirty, and we need to get to the gutter lines. So without putting any kind of parking restrictions in certain areas, certain times, we're really not gonna sweep streets. All we're gonna do is run that machine down the middle of roads. Now, we can sweep a lot of the streets that have limited parking already, some of the main thoroughfares, basically around Government Center. We can get to certain areas that are not parking prohibitive early, but unfortunately, without putting some kind of restrictions in place, it's very difficult to sweep. So we put together this pilot program, and it's, again, it's strictly, for now, a guide as to what we could do. I've tried to line up most of the sweeping days with the trash collection days, so that as the trash gets picked up, there's no parking on that particular side and of that street, and we could run the sweepers up, and then cars can park immediately after the sweeper goes by. Not sure on the logistics. A while back, probably 2004, 2005, we used to put up portable signs, no parking this side of the street, this particular day, the sweeper went by, we pulled the signs, and people were allowed to park. This would, this could be as simple as that, or it could be a little more elaborate as having signs permanently put up and a permanent schedule put in place. If you notice the, on the bottom on that particular pilot page, it has some procedures, holiday weeks would be excluded, one sweeper, which would be an additional sweeper than we have now, we only have one street sweeper available. So the additional, that one sweeper would be assigned to these projects, so it wouldn't be that people didn't park there, and then all of a sudden, the sweeper doesn't come by, and they, you know, like that snowstorm when we had the parking ban and doesn't snow. We don't want that to happen, so there'll be a sweeper just assigned to the particular program and allow us to do that. There are also streets in the city that we sweep once a year, and it's satisfactory. We sweep right after the winter and the spring, and mostly in our rural kind of areas where we don't have a lot of traffic and a lot of litter. But in areas, and I can tell you the streets that are swept every single day, Bedford Street, Pleasant Street, South Main, North Main, around Government Center here, Sullivan Drive, Eastern Avenue, Plymouth Avenue, those are everyday runs, and for a sweeper that does three or four miles an hour, an average of seven miles a day, when they're done with that, that's about it. There's nothing left of the day. So in order to get a little bit more done, we would need an additional sweeper, and that would allow us to do some of these spot sweepings, because I think that some areas, if they seen a sweeper once a month, once every six weeks, it would be sufficient. As far as the areas that are really bad on the main streets, we'd still have to do those every day. And the second piece of that document is the actual sweeper. It's a regenerative sweeper, is what we use now, basically putting air down, loosening what's there, sucking it back up. It has some side broom and gutter brooms on it, also has a main broom underneath it, and it's a, it's a left-side drive or right-side drive, so whichever gutter we're looking to do. It also would allow us with that, and it has cameras, so it allows us to actually see what we're picking up, so if it's something damaging, we can take care of. It's broken down by main price as a single purchase, and it also has some options of three, four, and five-year leases, which would ease the burden on the department for the purchase.
Thank you. Mr. Pacico, I'd like to commend my colleague in seat five, who put in a resolution to have this sweeping program enacted. But I would ask you, have we looked, as many communities do, looked into the possibility of doing street sweeping during the evening hours, closing off one side of the street or the other one on our main streets? Because during the day, as you all know, it's very difficult to sweep streets, and it's also, I mean, there's much traffic on all our main thoroughfares. But by doing it during the evening hours, we could basically ask for no parking on one side of the street or the other, where we could accomplish that goal. Have we looked into that?
Counsel, we had, with probably, except for the last 14 months, we had an evening, a third-shift sweeper operator that would work at night in these, in some of these areas. We never had the ability not to have parking on one side, however, but we did do the sweeping at night, and it has its advantages and disadvantages. Road miles, accountability, there are a lot of things that you have to take into effect with third shift being the sole worker out there. So we would have to look at how we could monitor that particular piece. We also would have the fact that this driver is out alone at night in an area, we need to, we need to take a look at that, depending on where he's sweeping and the areas he's sweeping in. And obviously, the breakdown of the vehicle at night with no help, we're talking, you know, could be out there for a while. So there's also the odd, odd seasons. So in the wintertime, you know, this year, we've been very fortunate, but if you have a bad winter, we have to worry about, you know, the inclement weather, and if I have a third-shift person, what is that third-shift person gonna do at that particular time? So there are some internal things that would have to be accomplished. I wouldn't be totally opposed to that. I would like to see how much I could get done during the day. Again, in areas like downtown where we do have residents, it would be difficult. It's tough enough during parking bans to get people to move their cars. I'm not sure how successful it would be, and would we want to tow people and ticket people if they're illegally parked for sweeping? So all of those things would have to be addressed, but it is an option, absolutely. And there are no, you know, believe me, at 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock in the morning, it would be a lot easier to sweep streets than it is during the day, so.
Yeah, well, you, I mean, obviously, we don't wanna go towing, but I, towing cars and ticketing cars, but I think if we do a good advertising-type program, letting people know that we're gonna be sweeping streets on certain days, and just making it part of the process, probably the first couple of times would be difficult, but as we go along, I think people would get the idea. And I'll tell you right now, there's an old cliche that is being used, especially by Natalie Mello in the Bank Street neighborhood, that says a clean community is a safe community. And as we go through our community, all of us realize that we need to do more as far as getting rid of litter in our streets and sidewalks, and I think this can probably put a new spirit in the city if we do it well and do it right. And I think by doing it during the evening hours, I would encourage the administration and yourself to look at if such a program can be enacted and enhanced. One other quick thing I'd like to ask you, is if you could explain the program here in paying for the street sweeper, I noticed that it's, I believe, was $210,000.
Yes.
$210,324. And you've got a payment program here, could you explain it?
Sure. Counsel, the three options are actually a three-year lease, a four-year lease, and a five-year lease. So as it is broken down by payments, obviously, the five-year lease, we'd pay $44,515 per year.
$915, but-
I don't have my glasses, Counsel.
Okay, bye.
Sorry.
But the point I'm making is what would you suggest is the best program? But the point I'm making is what would you suggest is the best program?
If...
And are we going to be doing the maintenance, obviously?
We do the maintenance now on the other vehicle. It would all depend on how it's going to be paid for. If we're going to lease it and this is going to be a budget item, then the five-year lease would be the way to go. If this money is coming as a gift, you know, from the administration and we're going to pay for this one shot, then I would say we pay for it. I know nothing's for free. Oh, and the other thing is, as you were mentioning about the Clean City and everything, the unfortunate part about this vehicle is it's not remote-controlled, so it has a driver. So to take the driver out of one of my 72 people I have now, wouldn't be doing a justice to the Clean City because they'd be coming off of a trash detail to do that. So it would need to, it would need to come with a driver and I'm not sure...
Have you got a hard hat, Kenny?
I do. And this is, if it's a third shift, I could probably do it. First and second shift, I'm kind of tied up, but third shift, I may be interested.
Okay.
I think the recommendation would really be for the five-year. The interest payments are a little bit lower. You defer some of the costs to the outer years, but with that being said, any lease that is above three years requires council approval to go out for a lease, so that would have to come before you in order to do so. And then as Ken has mentioned...
Could you turn on your mic? Is it on?
It is on, yep.
Okay.
As Ken had mentioned, his staffing is at 71, 72 individuals for the DPW. Fortunately, we have a new, obviously, the trash program, the cot program that's going out and we've also purchased...
I was going to bring that up.
We've procured some new equipment, which will hopefully free up some individuals. So I don't anticipate one individual for a street sweeper bringing a budget breaker here, but as Ken has mentioned, I think in the past couple of years, maybe early 2000s, we had about three street sweepers out in the city where we're currently down to one. Purchasing an additional street sweeper is going to have an impact, but I don't think it's going to have the impact that everybody is going to anticipate it to have. We've also had some internal conversations as to whether or not it would be more beneficial to see if a private contractor coming in to do the street sweeping would be beneficial to the city. Right now, at this time, it's coming in a little higher than anticipated, so I think for the short term, an additional street sweeper for a five-year plan makes more sense going that way. But again, from a logistical standpoint, what's really important is to have a plan that's in place with regards to the parking scenario and having that street sweeper actually have the access to the gutters, which is the most important thing.
Well, you're touching on a question I had for you, Sean, and that was, as you just pointed out, wasn't too long ago, we had three street sweepers out there in a city I think looked a lot better then. Should we be getting two instead of just the one? Is it fiscally...
Well, I caution you to that because there are a lot of demands throughout the entire city. I mean, you've got the Police Department, Fire Department. With the three street sweepers, also came a DPW staff of, how many?
Hundred and two.
Hundred and two compared to 71 now. So again, it's obviously the demand and the financial constraints that we're faced with. So when budget cuts came and the reduction in staff, the street sweepers went, as well as when they started to break down, you know, from a cost standpoint, it was more important to try to keep the bodies in DPW as opposed to the street sweeper and that's why we're faced with where the situation we're with.
Well, shortly, we're going to be going to a new pickup program relative to our DPW. And I'm going to tell you something, we have taxed those individuals beyond belief and I'm talking about the men and women at work at the DPW. But it's anticipated that some of them people will be freed up from trash collection because of the new units that we're getting. How many people, Mr. Pacico, do you anticipate being freed up to do other tasks?
Yeah, I think you want to caution yourself on that because...
Well, that's why I'm asking the question.
When we say people are going to be freed up, actually, we're spending almost close to a million dollars in overtime. So by freeing up those individuals, we're able to put them on additional trash routes, if you will, to actually pick up the trash and actually reduce the cost of overtime.
We currently run, on our two heavy days, which is Monday and Tuesday, we run between 11, well, we run 11 trash routes and we could run as many as six recycle routes if we had the trucks. So we currently only have two recyclers, possibly three on a good day, and we're down to seven trash trucks. So we're picking trash up with other vehicles other than trash vehicles. So we will be freeing up those individuals to allow them to do more pickups. What I'd like to do is do yard waste on regular time, definitely recycling on regular time and currently neither one of those are being done during the day or not on a regular basis anyway. So the freeing up of individuals, our hope is eventually we will have a few people here and there that we can put on these other assignments. But I think initially what we're trying to do is get rid of the overtime or a good portion of it. DPW, when it had 102, used 150 to 200,000 a year in overtime, basically for cleanup projects, some road work, emergency work. We're hovering at 600, 700, and 800,000 for overtime now and that's for just functions, regular daily functions that should be handled between 7:00 and 3:00. They're not being handled. So we hopefully will eventually get to that point and that is a hope and that is the design of the new program. Also, keep our workers healthy and safe. With the other part of this is that new vehicle piece and how the trash will be collected and recycling and yard waste hopefully at some point. But as, you know, Sean said, there's no way for me to say I'm going to have 10 extra people or five extra people. I really don't know until we start seeing how quickly, you know, and how many units per truck we're able to collect. We have a pretty good idea, but I'd like to have a few more carts on the street before we can make that determination.
Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Here's Counsel Mitchell. Counsel Poulain.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to follow up on one of the questions my colleague Counselor Mitchell had asked. So by the end of this year, the rolling, curbside, recycling, and trash pickup will be out to the entire city?
Yes.
So as of January of 2013, I guess you would anticipate seeing the overtime costs come down?
I think it's going to be a gradual piece and yes, that's absolutely correct. I'm hoping to see some of that overtime piece start decreasing by the end of April.
So when we say free up, what you're saying is that in terms of those individuals, instead of paying overtime, they'd be able to be on regular-time routes?
Right, right. Exactly. What we're hoping to do is if we can get 11 to 13 trucks on the street picking regular collections, that collections could possibly be finished by, let's say, noon, recycling at the same time, and then in the summer months, yard waste could be collected and possibly finished before 3:00. And that's the goal.
Right. I know the figure of a million dollars was mentioned. That's a lot of money for overtime.
Yes.
And then you talk about workers' comp, you're working people harder. You have a smaller number of people, you're working them harder. I would imagine workers' comp has to be by the number probably...
It's a floating number, but it has peaked in the course of the last 25 to 36 months. It has had its peaks.
Just to the administration, to Mr. Kadim, this is not for you, Mr. Pacico. I'd much rather see if it's possible money to be spent in hiring workers rather than in overtime and in workers' comp. I don't know if that's something that you could consider looking at in this next budget. Mr. Pacico has 72 workers, as he stated. I remember the days when DPW did have 102. In the numbers that I've looked at, in my opinion, a minimum staffing level for that department, I don't know if Mr. Pacico will agree or disagree, but I would think a minimum staffing level for that department has to be at least 80 men. Is that a fair, Mr. Pacico?
That's a good number. And we've talked, I've had many a conversation with the administration on that particular piece and, again, I understand the needs of the rest of the city also and, you know, I'm not about to bite the hand that's feeding me with $6 million worth of trucks and carts, the council and the administration, but I, like a lot of other people, want more and more and more, so...
No, but you have a right to speak up for your department. As I know, if we have the Police Chief down here or the Fire Chief, they certainly advocate for their department. So I know, as Mr. Kadim said, there are competing interests, but certainly, public safety and I think Public Works are some key areas that we need to make sure that we have adequate staffing, so that's just more an editorial comment than anything else. But, Mr. Pacico, when you were putting this together, did you look at any other communities? I'm thinking of like New Bedford, Brockton, Lowell, Worcester, Cambridge communities with maybe 80,000 or more in population. Did you look to see at what those communities have in terms of street sweeping programs, what models they have, if they have a program?
We've looked into three of the communities you mentioned, a few others.
Which three?
We looked into New Bedford.
Yep.
We've looked into Brockton. I've looked into Somerville, Quincy, Lowell. They all have quite a bit more equipment than we do. Obviously, staffing is there also and they do have parking restrictions in place. They do have evening sweepers working. But again, as I said, the equipment is, the numbers are there and they still have the same issues that we have, that people don't park where they're supposed to park and it hinders. They do, I think only one community is towing. I think maybe some of, I think is the only one, maybe Quincy too, that actually tow. I know the city of Boston tows all the time and they have 40, 50, 60 pieces of equipment on the road and they sweep every night. So, but it shows. So unfortunately, we don't have that kind of ability or funding to do that, but I do believe that, looking at the other communities that I just mentioned, I think that, as Sean just said, the one sweeper is going to be out there. I don't think we're going to have the results that we'd like to have with the one sweeper. I'm not advocating for more, although, as I said, you know, I wouldn't mind having more equipment. I think it's an overall community piece that we have to get to a point where people actually care what they're throwing around and I can tell you that the cart program is going to change the way the streets look. It's going to change because on trash day, nothing should be blowing around. If it's in the cart, it's not going to leave, as it is now. People package their trash on trash day. Once it's out of their yard, it's out of their responsibility and that's unfortunately what happens and then the animals and weather take effect and everything is all over the place. And if you go down a street after we've been by it, it's worse than before we went by it because the trucks leak, the trucks have splits on them. If you dump a barrel and stuff is not in bags, as soon as you pick that barrel up and the wind catches it, it goes all over the place. If there's stuff stuck on the bottom of the barrel, it ends up on the ground. And I will be the first to admit that some of that is our fault and obviously, some of it is the fault of the people who are putting out the trash in a non-responsible way. So I think the cart program is going to help the sweeping program or help the neighborhood program, which will let the sweeping program do what it should do and that's, you know, just minor stuff. It shouldn't be picking up cups and bottles and cans and everything else. That stuff is due to trash, not necessarily people throwing it out the window, so I think one will complement the other.
Yeah, I think the cart program will help tremendously. It's one of the reasons that I supported those loan orders and I want to thank the administration because I think I had actually put in a resolution to discuss how to move that forward and I think not even a meeting or two later, the loan orders came down. So I thank you for the quick response and the opportunity to move that program forward and get it into the rest of the city. But the reason I asked the question about looking at other communities, obviously, the equipment and manpower, those are huge hurdles and those other communities may have them or found a way to afford those and we haven't to this point. But just in terms of the parking restrictions and other things, the reason I asked the question is because we don't think, I don't think we necessarily have to reinvent the wheel. There's other communities, there's different parking and restrictions and things that they employ that we can look at. Obviously, we can't do something that doesn't work for our community. We'd have to adapt it to our community, but that's the reason I asked the question is I think there are some other models that we can look at and I'm pleased to hear that you did look at other communities and what they were doing. My last question is just in terms of sweeping, not just street sweeping, but sidewalk sweeping. I knew at one point in time during a previous administration, we had these things, I think they were called green machines. They were sidewalk sweepers. We had three at one point.
Yeah, we have none. All three of them are, two of them were, when I came on, were already gone. We had one left that was operational and that one is no longer operational. We haven't had a sidewalk sweeper for about a year and a half now.
A year and a half? So all three are, have they, they all broke down?
Yes, they were all, and the cost to fix them was almost as much as a purchase, right.
Yeah. Well, I think as long as we're talking about the issue of sweeping and we're looking at purchasing a street sweeper, I think maybe we should look at the issue of the sidewalk sweepers as well and purchasing some new sidewalk sweepers. I don't know what the cost would be. I don't know what the manpower needs would be, but I just wanted to raise it because we were having the conversation about sweeping, so. With that, Ayeel, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mioza.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Mr. Pacico and Mr. Kadim for being here tonight and taking the time to put this together. The street sweeping, the cleanliness of the city is something that's near and dear to my heart. I have to ask Mr. Pacico, the street sweepers are more though, more than just for sweeping, picking up debris. It's my understanding that they help with protecting the storm drains and the curbings, so it's much more than just...
Yes.
...cleanliness. Am I correct?
Yes. I mean, as they're going by, there are obviously, a lot of the storm drains are blocked, so they're taking some of that surface material. We don't use the sweepers for catch basin cleaning. They have the capabilities of that. On the back of the, on the unit, there are some catch basin cleaners. There's also some leaf pickup. We've used these vehicles, obviously, in the parks, cemeteries for cleaning up the streets in there and also doing some leaf collection when the vehicle is available for that. So it does serve more than just street sweeping.
Okay. The way I look at the street sweeper, I look at this as an investment in economic development for our city. It impacts public safety, so it impacts a lot of different things. I just wanted to make a point to the Counselor in Seat Six. I know that he felt that there may be a challenge to get people to comply with the parking bans and the schedules and that, but other communities are successful, as Counselor in Seat Seven had mentioned. I've done a lot of research. I have some plans, street sweeping plans from other communities and they do, somehow they do make it work. So I think, you know, we don't need to recreate the wheel. I think that you have a good pilot, a good start of a program here. And I also think that, you know, our neighborhood groups do a really good job of cleaning the city and I think we, government needs to do their part. And so I heard that, you know, one time we had three street sweepers. We're looking to get another one and I understand that there's a lot of pull on resources, so I'm okay if we can get one street sweeper. I guess my question would be, what are the next steps? How do we get that, the additional equipment? How do we put this pilot program into practice?
Yeah. I guess the next step would actually be to have the conversation of the determination was that the street sweeper should be procured. The conversation needs to be had on how long it was going to be for, if it's going to be a three, four, or five years. A five-year or anything above a three-year would have to come down to the council for approval. And then obviously, the conversation's about a bond authorization we need to go forward. So that was, those are obviously the next steps. From a logistical standpoint, I think Ken can talk more about that as far as implementing a, I don't know if he needs to actually do an amendment to the pilot, but again, the other piece is also just really the enforcement of the parking, I guess, bans, if you will, to make sure that they're effective. So I think those are conversations that also need to be had with the council because when you talk about the other communities, I'm sure there is some type of enforcement with regards to that and I think we all need to be on the same page. If we are going to do this and we're going to invest in the street sweeper, we need to make sure it's going to be utilized properly. So, Ken, if you want to talk about the logistics.
Sure. I would think that a first step with regards, after Sean said, the financing piece, the first step would be possibly to have the council put this into Transportation, Public Works and Transportation, so that we can develop this particular pilot program into something that everyone's comfortable with, put the enforcement pieces in place, and then get started on it. And as far as the vehicles, some of these vehicles are built, some will have to be ordered, so we would have to check on the availability. This particular item is off the state bid list, so the procurement piece, we wouldn't necessarily have to go through with the procurement piece. This particular item is off the state bid list, so we, the procurement piece, uh, we wouldn't necessarily have to go through with the procurement piece. And also, this company does the finance piece also, so if we decide to go to lease, um, this is the vehicle we do have currently. Um, we've had little or no trouble with it whatsoever, so we would be obviously looking to stay on, on that path. Um, and, uh, I think that would be the first two steps. Um, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm gonna guess, um, most of these vehicles are a hundred and twenty days out. Um, so the ti- time is of the essence, obviously, if we wanna get in, in for the, uh, summer season and get the vehicle on the road. Um, but I, I think that would be a good start.
I'm just curious, is there any refurbished equipment that, uh?
There would be, and there's, um, all of these companies offer that, um, they're not, um, there's not a lot of savings on refurbished. Um, and, and they're all trade-ins, obviously, people trade in. The city's never been in the trade-in kind of game, we've always used it until it doesn't run. Um, but I, I think that, um, we could look into, into refurbished and we possibly may be able to get a two-for-one, um, a download down that lane. Uh, knowing full well that we won't have warranties and different items other than that. But these particular models have stainless steel, uh, barrels inside them, so to speak, so, um, other than the mechanical piece, which is the engines, and, and we can get some warranties on that, I think we'd be in pretty good shape. So we can look into that also and bring those options, uh, to the committee.
Okay, great. Again, I think this is an investment in our economic, uh, development for the future. And I thank you gentlemen for being here tonight, and with that, I yield.
Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Madam President. And, uh, firsthand, uh, I had the, uh, I had the ability to sit down with, uh, a few of the, uh, Public Works Department workers themselves. And, uh, I can tell you right now, I don't know how the city looks in the condition that it is and how short-staffed the Public Works Department is. I commend the city of Fall River and you, Ken Pacheco, like we spoke to today. I cannot believe what you can accomplish in this city with the manpower that you're down. Now, when you say you have seventy-two men, uh, you're, you're including supervisors, you're including secretaries, everybody that's in the Public Works Department, correct?
Yes.
All right, so we basically have out there, on, on the street, probably anywhere between, let's say, fifty to fifty-five workers out there on the street.
Or less.
Okay, or less. Now, way back when, we had a hundred and two. I tell you, going there, seeing it firsthand, speaking to some of your supervisors and, and talking to the men on the backs of the trucks and actually getting into the heart and soul of what you guys do, it's just unbelievable. And this s- street sweeper couldn't come fast enough into the city of Fall River. Order it yesterday, as far as I'm concerned. We go neighborhood to neighborhood and I see where we, uh, where, where we need a little bit of attention in certain areas of the city, more so than others. With that being said, I think this was a great resolution that Counselor Mayoza came up with to, to, uh, I, we should order two of these things. It's, it's, it's so vital to the future of our city to have a clean city. But I just wanted to let the people of Fall River know and this council here, that I took the time today to speak to the supervisors of the Department of Public Works, to speak to the men themselves that are working, collecting, collecting and hearing their issues, hearing their problems. And it, it, it's hectic. Lastly, I just feel that we as a city need to get every single homeowner responsible to some degree and enforce the current laws that we have, the ordinances, trash ordinances that we have. When you put out your trash on that day, if you take the time to sweep up the sixty feet of frontage or eighty feet of frontage that you have in, in these thickly se- in these, uh, thickly settled areas, on that trash day, the, the people of the city also need to lend the Department of Public Works a hand. This way, it makes it a lot faster, a lot more efficient. I just think that there's ordinances that need to be implemented throughout the city and we need to get the message out to the homeowners, to the landlords, whoever it may be, to contribute, keep your trash where it needs, how it needs to be kept. And I, I, I'm just dumbfounded on how the city functions with the shortage of manpower that they have. This, it's, it's unbelievable, the, the unbelievable job that you guys do for the city, for the, for how short-staffed you are, is just unbelievable. These men are working overtime after overtime just to try to keep up. And the misplacement, like you said, uh, uh, Sean, is to take a guy from here and put him there. That's not what it's about, it's for us to ke- catch up on, on where we're lacking on that eight-hour day. I just, uh, like to commend, uh, Director of Public Works, Ken Pacheco, and, and what he does and his staff. You guys work very, very hard for our city and you can use all the help you can get. With that, I yield, thank you.
I think Ken will attest to the fact that, uh, the individuals he has working directly under him are one of the, uh, best and underappreciated individuals in the city. Uh, the day-to-day operations that they, they do, um, some of the situations that they're faced with, the environment that they're faced with, it's very difficult and to, to see these individuals come back day after day after day, working, uh, well over eight hours is, is a testament to how dedicated and loyal they are to the, to the city of Fall River. And, um, and it is a, a, a well-oiled, well-oiled machine, um, and I think Ken and the supervisors and everybody down there really deserve, uh, a lot of credit, especially with the manpower that they've been dealt with, um, and, and looking around the city. You know, it's not just the daily trash pickup, it's also the street repair, it's the, you know, pothole repairs that we're trying to deal with. It's all the same individuals that we're dealing with. Um, and, and the constant calls that are coming in and everything that, um, individuals have to go out there and, and fix on a daily basis is, is, uh, is unbelievable. And they do a great job, yeah.
Yes.
Counselor Kilby.
Yes, uh, I wasn't gonna comment, but, but I, uh, motivated there by Counselor Rigo. Um, but it starts from the top, I think. Uh, I know all the DPW workers I speak to, uh, enjoy working for you, Ken. They respect you, they know you're a man of your word, you treat them fairly, um, and I'm, I hear that from all of them. Um, but I'll point one particular gentleman that I think we all know, Mr. Al Brum. He's the hottest working city, hottest working city employee that we have. He's from the Dunkin' Donuts at the bottom of Robins Street, all the way down, uh, Bedford Street. Um, you don't need a street sweeper if you have a guy like Al Brum. The guy is just a tremendous, tremendous worker, uh, and I just thought it was important to mention his name here and recognize him. But, uh, it's a credit to you, Ken, with the staff that you have, um, I think you do a terrific job. And, uh, the men respect you and they, like I said, they enjoy working for you. So with that, I yield.
Counselor in seat number one, Counselor Camara.
I also wanna commend him too, but I just wanna say, Ken, remind Sean of his comments when he was negotiating the contracts with those people, because they are drastically underpaid, in my opinion, I think we all agree to that, and they should be rewarded for doing what they're doing with the staffs that they have.
This, this is actually a very good time in council, 'cause I'll be negotiating my contract, so, this is perfect.
I'll, I'll get you a copy of the tape, we can play it before the contract negotiations begin, just to remind Mr. Kadim.
I'm sure the teams is already have it.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. One thing I would caution is the street sweeping at night. Ken, do you remember that man that would call me on a weekly basis on Bedford Street because the street sweeper went by early in the morning? So I hope that the one you purchased is one with a silencer on it that doesn't make as much noise as the others.
Yeah, uh, unfortunately, there are quite a few areas and we have to be very careful where we sweep at night. It's, uh, if it's not completely commercial, it's, it's really not a good thing to do. Because we do get people who are, you know, working second shift and, and they're coming home and they're trying to sleep in that particular time. And, uh, unfortunately, we do get our share of complaints and it's always the same time, it's always the same day and, and, because they're on regular fixed routes, so, um, it is, it is a problem, uh, to that third shift sweeping.
Thank you, hold on, I think, Counselor Mitchell.
Yeah, uh, very quickly, I'd just like to clear up a misconception. I, I never stated that I didn't think that this could work. I think it can work during the evening. And, uh, I, I stated early on, I believe it was Mr. Kadim, and said, "We don't wanna get into a towing program," which we don't. But I, I do feel that through advertising and hopefully, we don't have to give out many tickets. But I think if we advertise it properly, we can implement this program. I think it can be successful. And as my colleagues have stated, I think that we should get going with a pilot program, because I'll tell you what. Um, we, a- as my colleague in, in C five just stated, this is an economic development program issue. Because I'll tell you what, when people come into our city, the appearance of our city is huge in whether people wanna locate in our community or not. So I just wanted to clear up that misconception. I'm, I'm not opposed to, uh, introducing this program or getting it off the ground, nor am I opposed to, if people do not wanna cooperate in helping us, giving them some type of message, uh, and normally that's through the wallet, that we have gotta clean up our city. And as my colleague in seat eight stated, I would hope that people who are on the side streets and rural areas clean up their, in front of their property. I know that a lot of us do it, but, uh, there are a lot of people who don't and it's, it would be good to implement such a program. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor in seat number three, Counselor Dennis.
One quick comment, I'll just give you a very concrete example of just how efficient they are. Um, I called up yesterday afternoon, had to be about three o'clock, there was some furniture out on the upper Winter Street, right on the corner from my house that had been there for several days, if not longer, when I noticed it. And, uh, it sat there for quite a while. I called up yesterday at three o'clock, this morning about eight-thirty, I went down the street, it was gone, all of it. And, uh, the street was clean. So, uh, they are very responsive when you call up, sometimes it takes them a little, it may take a little bit longer than that. But, uh, I think as we've all suggested, given the staffing, they do one heck of a job and I appreciate it. Uh, I know when, uh, anytime I've ever called up and asked them to come and pick some stuff up, so thank you. No, I think they would've done it for everybody. I know they would've, but thank you anyway, I appreciated it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, in the sweet sweeping, uh, sweeping pilot program, um, I know you're doing Columbia Street and Durfee Street, that vicinity. Perhaps Millican Boulevard can be added, because that's an entrance to the city?
Sure.
Hopefully, um, hopefully, we can get started on it. Thank you so much, Mr. Kadim, Mr. Pacheco, for coming down and explaining the program.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Could I have a motion for the first item on the agenda relative to the loan order to refer to council for leave to withdraw?
So made.
Will she refer to full council?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to refer to full council.
All in favor?
Aye.
The third item on the agenda is the Preservation Society regarding a master plan for Forty C District. The presenters, uh, Jim Sewell and John Sylvia, both Fall River residents.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jim Sewell. I live at five thirty-seven Rock Street in Fall River, represent the Preservation Society of Fall River.
And John Silva, six thirty-five Rock Street, Fall River, also from the Preservation Society.
Um, so tonight, I wanna go over this idea of a local historic district. In brief terms, we're not gonna keep you here all night, 'cause I could talk about it for hours, a days. I've done it a few times. I think we spent a few nights together and.
Yes, we have.
Those were long nights, it seemed so quick, though. Anyways, uh, so you have before you a printout of the pres- of this PowerPoint presentation, which goes into detail. So I don't need to go into the detail, I'm just gonna talk through some of the major pieces of what we're doing. And the main point that I wanna talk about is that this is a, a project that was started back in the eighties. It came to a city council vote and it was voted down at that time. It was very close, but it was voted down. And one thing I have on our side this time around, we're doing it over again, is communication and transparency. In the days of computers and Facebook, we can get out, and we can get the word out and talk about it now, dispel any myths that might be abound, uh, and let you know. So like tonight, this is not about any vote, this is just about letting you know what we're up to. Uh, one thing I will talk about is that the Preservation Society, as most of you know, is a nonprofit organization. So this is a project that we have taken under our wing for the past few years. And because of the, the way it's required to develop, we're actually passing this project on to the Local Historic District Study Committee for the next, uh, phase of the project. Uh, so, these are nice pictures in here. All these pictures, except for one, is in the city of Fall River. And this is one of the things that the city of Fall River is re- really famous for. And we, we live here, we take it for granted a lot of times. These pictures are mostly in the, uh, lower highlands, but they're all over the city. I mean, Fall River is a fantastic place for architecture. What is a local historic district? So everyone knows we have an historic district here, but there's different types. We have a nationally recognized historic district, we have a, uh, it's recognized by the state. When you have a, a national, a state recognition, it's in recognition only, it's in word only. So there's a, there's a, uh, a thought that we have a protective, protective rights over these historic properties. We don't, actually, Fall River does not have that. And that's what creating a local historic district is. And it's called local because it's not up to the state or the federal government to tell us what we wanna do. It's something that's designed by our own community, by our own city. Why is it, why is it beneficial to have this? I will talk about this, 'cause this is really important. We save historic structures, it helps preserve the neighborhoods, it stops major alterations and demolition. Because when you, when you have inappropriate alterations, you lose the historic theme. There's one photograph I want you to take a look at. I didn't do this photograph in the city of Fall River, this is from outside the city. And this is a real picture, it's in Massachusetts, it's of a, a fantastic Victorian duplex. And it, it demonstrates in one picture exactly what we're talking about. Because in one property, you can see that it's been preserved and maintained. It's in the book. I don't have to. That's it, I don't have a page number.
Okay, saw that one, yeah.
That's it. It's so, um, it shows very clearly what can happen when you make changes that are, don't really work. So we've, we're proposing that this historic district is a tiny area, it's only two blocks, a small area. And we did that on purpose, because over the past few years, we've been gauging the neighbors and the property owners. And we wanted to make sure people were on board, because there is a certain amount of control. We're proposing a very, for it to be fairly loose, so we're not telling people what to do to the nth degree. But there is a certain amount of control. And because of that, we've gauged the neighborhood and we've shrunk it down to a tiny area, because we don't wanna be putting off the neighbors. We want to make it as inclusive as possible. We're hoping that it, it goes through, and if it works, people see that it's workable, that we're not bullying anybody, that it's good for their, for themselves, for their own property values, and it's good for the city. And if that's the case, then we could talk about expanding it. And those goals are in the presentation that you have there. The creation of the Forty C, it's a process that's, uh, regulated by the state. The state tells us how we have to do the process. We're going through it, we've done a, a study, the study's been submitted to the Mass Historic Commission. One of the next steps is go- gonna be that there's gonna be, uh, public hearings. It allows the public to come in and talk to us and voice their concerns. And then, but ultimately, it'll be the city council's vote, it'll be coming back to you. There's a page on, goes into more detail on how the process works, I won't recite that to you, it's in your book there. Most frequent questions, do we already have an historic district? We do have a historic district, but it's a national one and it's a state one, not a local, so we don't have protective, any protective rights right now. So we don't have protective, any protective rights right now. The last page talks about exclusions and inclusions. So if we get to the point where we vote to approve a local historic district, there are certain exclusions and inclusions that will be, will be reviewed by the Local Historic Commission. And this page is the preservation's recommendations. And if you review it at some point in time, you'll see that we're pretty liberal. We're not, we don't want to talk about the paint colors, the people are using, we don't want to make people change things that they've already done. It's about the future, and it's about not altering the architectural styles. So there's still a lot of room for play, and you'll see that in there. And again, this is just the Preservation Society's point of view, but in the end, it won't be up to the Preservation Society. It'll be up to you, it'll be up to the Historic Commission, the Local Historic Commission. It'll be up to the neighbors who come to the public hearings and tell us how they feel about it. But what we're proposing is really a very liberal point of view.
Councilor Kilby?
I, thank you, Mr. Sewell, thank you, Mr. Sewell. I saw it as, like you said, a relatively small district. Have you surveyed all the property owners at this point, in total, to see?
There's a handful of property owners that didn't respond. For example, Sisters of Holy Union, for example, they won't, they won't respond. It's because they won't give us a, they won't, they just, they just don't vote. And so there are a handful of properties that have not responded.
Majority have, though, would you say, Mr. Sewell?
Yep.
Thank you, Madam President.
You yield, Councilor Kilby?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Councilor Dennis?
Just a few comments, Mr. Sewell, Mr. Sylvia, appreciate you coming, know you both quite well. Just a few comments, feel bad my house isn't included. If you just moved it over one more street, I'd be, I'd be happy, I'd be glad to have my house included, as I'm sure others would be. I think it's important to note that I know people have an impression of a historic district, and I think, Mr. Sewell, you did a good job of mentioning that this is not the type of historic district where people are going to be knocking on your door, telling you what color to paint your house, or what you can and can't do. It is very, it is very important to understand that part of this is to maintain the nature and character of a very, very, very historic neighborhood. In fact, my understanding, and Mr. Sewell, and Mr. Sylvia, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that Fall River has one of the largest historic districts in the country. We just don't do a lot with it, we've never marketed it, we've never done a good job as far as including that in a overall economic development and tourism plan. It's something we could and should capitalize on, and I think this type of district would go a long way to helping us with that. So, I know I participated several years ago in doing a house inventory and going, counting houses and all that kind of stuff, and taking some pictures, and I was very pleased to do the work, and I was very, very pleased to have been able to help. This is a lot of work. What you see here is the result of years of, sometimes very tedious work. I just want you to know that I certainly appreciate it, I recognize the hard work that's going into it, and I hope that my colleagues will support it. It, again, has lots of benefits to the city. It isn't just that we're going to maintain some historic homes, although that's certainly part of it. Again, it has a very, some benefit in terms of economic development and tourism, and it's one of the pieces that we've been missing in the city. So thank you for all your hard work, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I yield.
Councilor Mayosa?
Thank you, I just had one quick question. I'm looking at your short-term goal, 2012. Where are we and when do you see it coming in front of the council?
There's a, an amendment to the study report that we'd completed. It'll probably be mailed to the Mass Historic Commission in the month of March. We'll get a response from that hopefully by April, everything takes a month. And then, come April, we can post for public hearings, which is sixty to ninety days, May, June, July. Could be October, hopefully it'll be October, November.
Okay, good. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor Mayosa. Councilor Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam President, and welcome, both. I guess you could say I'm just going to get the lawn picnic in that, in the eighties. When I was on the council, I was one of the individuals who voted against that. And the reason I voted against it was because we were told at that time that they were going to take this huge area, it was a lot bigger than what you're talking about here, Jim, but they were going to take this huge area of the city. And after hearing some of my colleagues at the time, and myself, some of the questions that I asked, they were going to stop cation driveways, or cement driveways, because those weren't back in the eighteen hundreds and the nineteen, early nineteen hundreds. And they were going to tell people what color they were going to paint their house if a person put in for a building permit. And I just thought it was too restrictive. If a person owns a home and they want to paint their house white, and somebody comes in and says, no, back when this was originally painted, we found out it was orange, so you got to paint it orange. And I just felt that was too restrictive. And I hope that when you come before us, although you have stated that it probably won't be as rigid as they were talking about back then, and they were going to have a commission, and that commission was basically going to oversee what people were doing in their homes. And I felt at times, I mean, if you wanted to talk about people in the future who, and that's what I said at the time, if you want to talk about people in the future who purchase a home in that neighborhood, and they agree to abide by these rules, that's fine, but what do you do with a person that's owned the home for twenty years, and they want to paint their home, and now all of a sudden, somebody's coming in and telling, or even five years, and somebody's coming in and telling them how, what color they're going to paint their home, and how they're going to renovate their home? I just didn't think that was right, and that's why I voted for it at that time. But if there's less, if they're less restrictive, I do feel that we, a historical neighborhood would be great for this city, as some of my colleagues have already stated. And I just hope that there's, we're working with those individuals, and we're not mandating what people do in those areas. And if that's the case, I'd be more than happy to join you, because I think it'd be great for the city, and I understand this funding that can come to our community if we have a historical district. So with that, I'll yield.
Thank you. Councilor in seat number six, seven, Councilor Pullen?
Thank you, Madam President. I think I first became interested in historic preservation back when I was in college. I had an opportunity to do an internship for the city of New Bedford, as well as Wale, the Waterfront Historic Area League in New Bedford, and Tony Souza was the director at the time, and I had a great opportunity to work with him and work with, they had a center city planner, a downtown planner, as well as a historic preservation planner, and they've been able to market their historic and cultural resources to their benefit much more effectively than Fall River. So I echo Councilor Dennis's comments in that regard, that they've been much more effective in marketing some of their historic and cultural attractions. And I'd like to see us get there, and I think that the work that the Preservation Society has been doing over the last few years, certainly under the leadership of both of you, has been tremendous. You're getting us to where we need to be in the city, I just want to commend you. And one of the reasons I filed this resolution to have you both come forward is this is one of the items that was in the master plan, that the community determined over a two- or three-year process of putting together the master plan, that they wanted. They wanted the creation of a 40 C historic district, and I think you've put a lot of work into surveying neighbors and property owners, and determining who's on board. And you do have a small district, as you described, but it's largely the majority of people that have responded, they want this, they want to see this happen. And as you said, you've come up with a plan that's as, that's as least restrictive as possible, while still having some safeguards for historic architecture. And I think what you've done is a great thing. I look forward to this conversation moving forward into the next phases, and I hope to one day be on this floor to be able to take a vote to adopt a 40 C district here in Fall River. And I think that it would be a step in the right direction, and there's certainly a lot more that the city can be doing to promote its cultural and historic attractions. And I know that, working together, that we're all going to get there to where we need to be, to be the type of progressive city in the city that shows that it cares for its architectural resources. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. My Councilor in seat number eight, Councilor Rego?
Thank you very much, Jim, and Mr. Sewell, for being here. I too, myself, looking at all of these pictures, I'm a carpenter by trade, you know? I look at these beautiful houses, and it's just unbelievable, you know, how we need to preserve areas like this. It's so vital to the city of Fall River and our history. One quick question that I have for you is historical tax dollars. Now, maintaining these houses is, it's difficult. And if you're not somebody that, you know, can afford to maintain these houses, the reason why people choose to do what you saw in the other picture is maintenance, you know? Throw up some vinyl siding on a house and maintenance-free, aluminum, wrap the aluminum around it, you're done. You're done for the next thirty, forty, fifty years, however long it lasts, which I think it's just a disgrace in my profession to, to, to see vinyl siding put on houses. I'd much rather see them kept, preserved. But now, will these homeowners be, be, have access to any sort of tax credit to, to, to help them out with, with maintenance, you know, like once every five years? I mean, the historical society, from my experience, you know, gives developers all kinds of money to preserve and to replicate what we're doing in these mills, you know? Are these homeowners going to be, you know?
Yeah, no, most, most historic and federal tax credits are actually for nonprofits, and they can be used for some commercial, but most private residences are not eligible for tax credits. And that's not an absolute, but for the most part, it isn't. The value in it, in the district, and especially that I started small on purpose, is that if you own a property in this neighborhood, it's really beholden upon you to try to preserve it for your own value in your property. I'm not going to say anything against people who put vinyl siding. My, my parents vinyl sided our house when I was a child, it was in the eighties. It was tough times, and they felt like they had to do it. I own, I've owned several three families, and they've had vinyl siding, and that's what they had, and we worked with it. My own house on Rock Street was a dilapidated mess when I bought it in 1993. And I probably wouldn't have bought it, knowing what I know now, but my wife and I, we stuck through it, and we've been preserving it. And actually, we've seen the neighborhood turn around. Twenty years ago, my neighborhood was mostly multifamilies, investment properties, and that's turned around, so that most of it now is owner occupied. Most of us have an apartment here, or a couple apartments, some condominiums, but for the most part, they're owner occupied. And you know what happens when you have owner occupied?
You take care of it, you take care of it. And I, in closing, I am, I am all for this. I think this is great, this is a great way to, to preserve our city. And thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I yield.
You yield. Seat number one, Councilor Kamara?
Thank you, Madam President. Before we start knocking vinyl siding, some vinyl siding is more expensive than red cedar shingles.
I know that.
So it all depends on the quality of the vinyl, and the quality of the detail that you're putting on it. And, you know, on that point, it says here that vinyl and wrapping materials are not generally acceptable.
That's true.
So who, did the board, the commission would determine whether this, these people can have vinyl and...
Well, if someone has vinyl siding already, no one's going to be told to take it off.
What if someone in the situation came where they couldn't afford the alternative, and they wanted to go with vinyl, are they going to be, depending on what kind of vinyl they use, or who makes that?
I think vinyl siding is always more expensive than painting. People vinyl side because they think in the long run, they're going to save money. And so in a lot of neighborhoods, that, that'll work. But in the short term, vinyl siding is never less money than painting.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that, but long term, if you're going to, if you, you're a young couple, you buy the house, and you have the option between painting it every two or three years, or four years, or putting vinyl siding on it for the next fifteen, twenty years?
So this is the, this is, this is the conundrum. If, if, if you live in the neighborhood, when the district is established, you know, your hands can be a little bit tied, because, okay, now I'm stuck here. But if, if this, if the district...
It'll change afterwards.
If the district is already established, and you're buying into the neighborhood, then the new owners should know, when they buy, that that's, that'll be an issue.
How do they get notified about that? I mean, you know, so Realtor in town, houses for sale, is it up to the Realtor?
Usually the Realtors are pretty good about notifying things. In fact, nowadays, actually, some, several of my neighbors have bought into the neighborhood, and they actually thought we had an historic district in place already, because the brokers are kind of already talking about it. And some of the mortgage companies are asking about it, too. They're assuming that we have this historic district in the lower highlands and highlands already, and we don't. But some of the, in fact, one neighbor right on Rock Street, when they bought the property, they, they were told by the bank that because they're in the historic district, they had to paint the house before they closed, or within so many weeks after closing. And that's not something that we, or the Preservation Society, or the historic district had, had said at all. But the mortgage company was kind of pushing the envelope, so to speak.
It also says, replacement windows, very debatable.
Yeah, well, in general, replacement windows are considered not, historically...
Newport, Rhode Island forbids them.
That's right. And I've put that, that way on purpose, because I think it's a negotiable point. I think if you have a leaded glass window, it's probably not a good idea to replace it. I think if you have a concave glass window, if you replace it with a plate glass that's straight, you're really losing value. But I put it that way in that book because, in the end of the day, it's not going to be what I recommend. It's going to be what you and the Historic Commission and the neighbors recommend. I don't want to have to be about what Jim Sewell is, or the Preservation Society is dictating. I want it to be about what the neighbors see, you know, what they can, what they can swallow.
Fair enough. Well, you know, in the eighties, when it was shut down, it's over thirty years ago, so things have changed.
And I do want this to be more transparent, and the concerns that you and Councilor Mitchell brought up, it's true, people, people have questions, some of them are real, and some of them are myth. And, but we want to be here this time around to talk about that, and dispel myths if we can, or set the record straight if we can. So I appreciate the questions.
Our questions are similar, but I want you to know, I wasn't here in the eighties. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Seat number two, Councilor Casey?
Thank you, Madam President. Jim, I think this is great for both of you, putting all the work and effort into creating this and working so hard. I know you put your heart and soul into it. But I do want to be sure that it's, everything is done correctly before it goes into effect, to make sure that we all are on the same page on who, whether the committee or whether the council here has final say on what's going to be expected and what's not going to be expected. Because if we don't have everything down in black and white, then even ourselves, we won't be in a situation, well, because of hardship, they can't do this, so it's good for one, but it might not be good for someone else. So I think we've got to make sure that everything is down in black and white. I think what you're doing is great, I think the, keeping these buildings in the condition that they're supposed to be in, I think is great for the city of Fall River, I think it'll be a draw for the city of Fall River. We're working so hard to bring tourists into the city. I think this here is going to be a plus. Besides the waterfront, everything together, I, to me, it's all coming to fruition now. And I think, I'd like to thank both of you for all the work you've done, and I know there were a lot of others. I want to thank you for all the work that was done. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
Mr. Sylvia, Mr. Sewell, thank you so much.
Just one question, one quick question. Jim, who purchased the Anthony House? My wife and I actually looked at this house about a year and a half ago.
If you had come on the house tour the other day before last, you would have seen it gotten a free tour.
We, we, we...
It's always this year.
But we went through the house a couple of times, and we were just amazed by the size, and it was owned by a group of sisters at one time, it was almost like a, could have been used as a middle...
A couple purchased that house, it's their private home, and they are slowly restoring it, although honestly, it already looks incredible.
And the reason I bring it up is this is an example of what... And the reason I bring it up is this is an example of what I think you're striving for in that district because, uh, I, I looked through that house with, with my wife and numerous occasions, it's just beautiful, but the amount of work that it needed uh, was, you know, quite colossal. But these people are a credit to the community because you drive out there now, Council Pres- President Pereira, it is a beautiful, beautiful home, so. And it is the Anthony House, I believe, right?
Counselor Gilby?
Yes.
You could've had Counselor Rego, Rego. He would've helped people, he had people who would certainly not have...
I have a lot of friends who are competitors, that probably would've happened, but, but I yield, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's true, I did have, um, an opportunity to visit some of the homes. Friend Charlie has an outstanding home who's here.
Mike?
Charlie who's here has an outstanding home, unbelievable what you see. I also went to a meeting with, uh, Council Myoza at another individual's home that, I mean, it could be a museum, these homes are phenomenal, phenomenal. I wish you could open the doors and let everybody in, we could put you on a tour. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number two on finance regarding the, uh, street sweeping. Do you wanna make a motion to refer that back to your committee to continue discussion there?
Motion for Works and Transportation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There is no citizen input time today. No one has signed up.
Let's keep going.
Do you wanna keep going or take a break, we're all set?
Keep going.
Keep going.
Okay. Council meeting come to order. Take the roll.
Councilors Kamara?
Here.
Casey?
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Myoza?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Pooleen?
Here.
Rego?
Here.
President Pereira?
Here. Will everyone in the council chambers please, uh, rise for a moment of silent prayer? Will everyone remain for salute to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs are meeting held on February twenty-first. Voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolutions be adopted. This is the support of the...
Motion to adopt, committee's report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on February twenty-first, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading.
Motion to adopt, committee's report?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on February twenty-first, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through the first reading and refer to the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation.
Motion to adopt, committee's report?
Second.
And refer?
And refer.
To ordinance. Somebody have a hand up?
No.
No, okay, so there's a motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinance?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on February twenty-first, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled and passed to be...
Motion for emergency preamble?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
On adoption of the emergency preamble, Councilors Kamara?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Myoza?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Pooleen?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
And President Pereira?
Yes.
Motion to adopt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five is an ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment. This is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to adopt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And item number six is also an ordinance for passage through second...
Motion to adopt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas there is a current effort to have Fall River's city charter reviewed and whereas the Fall River Charter Advisory Group has prepared an informational presentation for the public and whereas the city council must order the question of a charter review be submitted to the voters, now therefore be it resolved that the Fall River Charter Advisory Group make a short presentation about the review process to the full council at a finance committee meeting.
Motion to adopt, resolution?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas vehicles exiting Route twenty-four South at the Highland Avenue exit are traveling at a significant rate of speed and whereas people who do not reside in the city of Fall River may be unaware that they are entering a residential area and whereas there have been numerous accidents in this area due to speed, now therefore be it resolved that the city council requests Mass Department of Transportation to install signs informing drivers that the highway is ending and they are entering a residential area.
Motion to adopt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas the former Central Congregational Church, Abbey Grill, is a historic building in the city of Fall River, whereas many of our historic buildings have been razed through the years and whereas we now realize that the loss of many of these historic structures are irreplaceable and should never have been demolished, now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor Massachusetts Historical Commission and developers be invited to a future meeting of the Committee on Finance to discuss ways to preserve the former Central Congregational Church.
Motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas the winter fading of painted street lines to include traffic lines, crosswalks, central lines and edge lines, stop bars, in part, is prominent throughout the city and whereas there is a potential for a serious accident to occur particularly on heavily traveled streets and whereas some of the lines have faded to oblivion and whereas many people from the public have expressed safety concerns regarding these fading, faded lines, now therefore be it resolved that this matter be sent to the Committee on Public Safety to discuss the schedule and methodology for repaving the city's street lines.
Motion to adopt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold, um, hold on. Council Myoza, would you like to speak on that resolution?
Well, I would just like to, uh, ask the chair if it was possible since it's... Did we vote on it? We did vote on it, right?
Yes.
That, that, if it's possible to, uh, get this on the next meeting, uh, given that, I know you hold monthly meetings.
Yep.
Um, this way here, we're not going into April. I think this is a serious issue. Um, driving around the city, I've, I've noticed a lot of the lines have faded, you can't see them. Um, you know, if you're a Fall River resident, you may be used to coming off one of the highways, but if you're somebody from out of town, uh, you, you know, I think there's a potential for a, a serious accident. So I would respectfully ask if the chair could see if it's possible to, uh, do that.
So through the chair to Counselor Mitchell, would you like to respond?
Uh, yeah, I, I will have it on the next, uh, public safety agenda and I will be asking that Laura Ferreira attend that meeting so that we can discuss it with her. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
I would, I'm sorry, Counsel...
Counselor Kilby?
Yeah, I would just suggest maybe you have Sean Kadim come down as well. We've had a light winter so far. I mean, we have about two or three weeks left. There may be a surplus in that snow account that could be utilized for, for this. It's along the same lines, so it seems logical, so with that suggestion, I, I yield, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Kilby. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the joint meeting of the city council and school committee that was held recently was very informative regarding the school department budget process and whereas after receipt of the school department budget, there will be many questions that could be answered by another joint meeting, now therefore be it resolved that the president of the city council call for another joint meeting of the city council and school committee and council chambers to discuss the school department's budget.
Motion to adopt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas there are numerous streets in the city that are in need of repaving and whereas every year, streets are repaved according to need, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Public Works and Transportation meet to discuss what streets are on the list to be repaved and also the schedule of when the work will be performed and be it further resolved that raised crosswalks and stop signs be considered in the planning of the new street construction in dangerous intersections.
Motion to adopt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Rego?
Uh, just a, a quick, a quick note, uh, on, on the raised sidewalk, it's, it's become, um, apparent to, uh, my talks with, uh, Ken Pachico and, uh, and traffic. Uh, for instance, Globe Street, uh, Globe Street is, is a very heavily traveled area and, uh, Emerald Central Market has just expanded. They're running a real, real good business there. And I have witnessed, just in one year, I've witnessed eighteen accidents, severe accidents, at, right at that corner. So when I went to Ken Pachico and I brought this before, uh, Ken, uh, he stated that I had to go in front of traffic and naturally, I'm, I'm, I'm raising awareness so this can come before public safety and, and, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, pub- public safety, transportation, public works. And, uh, that would be, uh, I know that Ken had told me that there was funding for one raised crosswalk. And the reason for that is because you can't put stop sign after stop sign after stop sign where there's lights. How that is, uh, you know, done, I don't know. Uh, that's something that's gonna have to be addressed. But that is one area, gentlemen, uh, uh, counselors, that I feel that we need a raised sidewalk. There is constantly people, I've seen two old ladies get hit by cars. It's, it's an area that needs to be addressed and that's why I put this resolution in. With that, I yield, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk?
Madam President?
Counselor Kamara, seat number one.
Just, just for clarification, are you talking about the intersection through the chair? Are you talking about the intersection, Montopin Globe?
Montopin Globe.
Cause that's where Emerald's Market is.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanna find out exactly what abouts on Globe Street.
And they're very concerned too. Just, uh, last, uh, just last week, there was a massive accident right on that corner, the, at, at night. It's, uh, and with that raised, with that raised sidewalk, crosswalk, going from one end of the store to the other, that will actually slow the cars down due to the fact that...
I just wanna make sure I know exactly what intersection we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk?
Whereas litter and trash is abundant in the city of Fall River and whereas it is the responsibility of property owners to keep their property free of litter and whereas on trash collection days, litter seems to increase dramatically in neighborhoods due to trash collection workers leaving behind trash that falls during the collection process. And whereas parks, cemeteries and all city-owned property is in need of more daily maintenance, now therefore be it resolved that the Director of Community Maintenance, Director of Parks, Director of Cemeteries, Director of Minimum Housing and the Special Projects Manager be invited to a future meeting of the Committee on Public Works and Transportation to discuss these matters.
Motion to adopt, second.
Does anyone have any comments on this before we take a vote? Uh, Counselor Rego, the sponsor of the resolution.
Uh, the reason why I put this resolution in, it goes back to what we talked about here with Ken. Uh, the, uh, it's, it's basically, uh, to bring everybody to the table and discuss what the plan is gonna be. How are we gonna, uh, uh, what do we have to do? And, and, and coincidentally, today just, uh, played out as it did with the street sweeper and having Ken here and whatnot, but w- we need to, you know, uh, do follow-through and, um, in order, in, in order to bring everybody to the table to discuss where there's need for manpower, what the schedules are like, so on and so forth, I felt to put this resolution in, this way it could come before the Public Works and Transportation, just to feel everybody and, uh, feel everybody out and hear exactly, you know, what the plan is, how many workers they have and where we need to target, the areas that we need to target.
Thank you.
You yield, Counselor Rego?
I yield, thank you.
Uh, I, I need to say, I, I commend each one of you because each one of you has, has spoken about litter, the cleanliness of the city and people are working together in some of what, you know, Counselor Myoza had, as you spoke about, the resolution to have street sweeping in here, Counsel, everybody has talked about it. I know that, uh, I have spoken to Laura about getting some signs at all of the entrances of these, of the city for people to know what the littering fine is. So everybody's done their piece, you know, uh, on, on doing this. And every piece that people are doing is, is putting the puzzle together to make it work. Counselor Dennis, I think you have, uh, something going on tomorrow regarding litter.
I do, I just want to, uh, mention that through the, uh, through the Park Advocates, the program that was started, uh, over a year ago, uh, they're finally ready to, uh, roll it out. It's gonna be a program that's gonna involve the Dirfee students. They're gonna be doing the marketing campaign. They'll be unveiling the logo that everybody will see on all the new trash cans. Uh, it's all, a lot of it's been done by the, uh, the Dirfee students. We're tasked with the job of putting the campaign, everything together. It's a, it's a really good educational opportunity for them. And that's going to, uh, there'll be a press conference tomorrow at Dirfee High School at one o'clock. Uh, Paul Marshall, the principal, will be there. I invite my fellow city councilors if they'd like to stop by. Uh, again, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a nice opportunity for the students to be involved in the, in the program and it'll be good for the city. And I hope that, uh, I hope it'll be well-covered because I think, uh, it's, uh, I guess it's a great experience for the students and they've done a terrific job. And I'd like to thank the, uh, the students and also, uh, Principal Paul Marshall at the high school for their cooperation, so I yield.
Counselor Pooleen, seat number seven.
Just a question through the, uh, president, is that, would that be in the auditorium or is that in another part of the building, at Dirfee?
I knew someone was gonna ask me that. Uh, I believe the last I was to, it's in one of the classrooms. It's probably gonna be in, uh, one of the, the graphic arts, uh, classrooms.
Room sixty.
Actually, it's room sixty. [laughing] Graphic Arts Department, room sixty. A little bird just told me, thanks. I yield.
But, but I think that's a key, that every single one of you has done something relative to litter, to cleanliness, to cleanups and, you know, to trying to pull people together to figure out where we're going. This is the end result, we wanna clean a city and what do we need to do to get there? And everybody has put in a piece of, of contribution to getting that done. I thank you all. Madam Clerk?
Motion to adopt.
Oh, there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Whereas the Community Preservation Act enables cities and towns in Massachusetts to create a local dedicated fund for open space, historic preservation, community housing and outdoor recreation projects. And whereas city and towns that adopt the act also receive funds from statewide community preservation trust funds each year for these projects. And whereas the implementation of the CPA in Fall River could provide funding to restore and preserve historic owned, city-owned buildings, parks, churches and museums, create new ball fields, boat launches and trial, trails for walking and biking, preserve land to create a greenway system throughout the city, create a housing fund trust to allow working families to purchase affordable homes, leverage additional dollars from state and federal sources thereby easing pressure on the city budget, fund projects that improve the quality of life of residents. Now therefore be it resolved that Alfred Lima of Save Our Neighborhoods be invited to the City Council Committee on Finance meeting on, scheduled for Tuesday, March thirteenth, two thousand twelve, to discuss this matter.
Motion to adopt, second.
Aye.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Ordered that a public hearing be held by the city council on Tuesday, February twenty-eighth at seven fifteen to hear all persons interested and wishing to be heard on the application for a secondhand article store on behalf of William Leach.
Is there any opposition?
No, no opposition.
Motion that the hearing be closed, permission be granted?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ordered that a public hearing be held by the city council on Tuesday, February twenty-eighth at seven fifteen to hear all persons interested and wishing to be heard on the application for the removal, removal of curbing on behalf of Stewart St. Anne's Hospital Corporation, seven ninety-five Middle Street. There are no objections.
Is there any, uh, objectives?
None.
For seventeen or eighteen?
Motion to ad...
We do have one for eighteen.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Motion.
Motion.
Would you like to take 16 and 17?
Yes, please, thank you.
Motion for both.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And item number 18 is the request for the removal of curbing on behalf of Serta, for removal of curbing at 1184.
Regulations?
Motion to regulations.
Public Works Transportation, no regulations.
Regulations.
Second.
So, the motion is to regulations, there's a second?
Public Works.
Public Works and Transportation?
Public Works and Transit...motion made for Public Works and Transportation.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Public Works and Transportation?
Aye.
Ordered that a public hearing of the Fall River City Council be held on Tuesday, February 28th at 7:15 to hear all persons interested and wishing to be heard on the subject of the acceptance of Dundee Street in its entirety.
Should this be referred to?
It's already been in committee.
Been referred.
Oh, it already has been in committee? Motion to adopt then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 20 is a hearing to be scheduled.
Motion to schedule hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have the police chiefs report on licenses?
Place on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a claim?
Motion to refer to Corporation Council, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Items 23 and 24 are minutes of the zoning and planning board's...
Motion to accept and place on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a street opening request on behalf of Corey Excavating for 120 Diamond Street.
To install fire suppression. Motion.
Yes.
Motion to allow.
Second.
Councilor in seat number seven, Councilor Pullen.
I believe that the city engineer put some requirements in there, if we could adopt this and incorporate the requirements listed by Byron Holmes.
I thought that was...fine, I'll make that as part of my motion.
Second.
So, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a notice of a project change at BFI Landfill.
What is the... What is it?
Notice of project change. SciTech Environmental has provided this to the council.
Would you...yeah, but don't you think that we should discuss that a little further in environmental...
Motion to refer to Health and Environmental Affairs, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We have the final report on the acceptance of Dundee Street.
Motion to adopt, second.
Going to have to get that signed.
And items filed after the agenda was prepared, whereas it has been over 60 days since the City Council's request to return the position of Fire Chief to civil service, and whereas the council has not been updated on the status of this request, now therefore be it resolved that the administration send representation to the next scheduled City Council meeting to be held on March 13th to give an update on this request.
Motion to adopt.
Is this a resolution?
Yes.
Councilor Mitchell.
Who filed it?
I did.
Councilor Mitchell filed this. Councilor Mitchell, sponsor of the resolution.
Thank you. I just find that it's taken an awful long time to get the information that we need to proceed down here to this council. It's been over 60 days. When the prior administration wanted to take this off of the...take this out of civil service, this was filed within a week to this council, and hearings were held, and so on and so forth, and now, we're in...we've been two months, and we haven't got any type of information down here from the administration in putting this back into civil service, and I just find that that's ridiculous. I find that the...my personal opinion is, is the mayor should have gone on this immediately. I think this is very important. I don't think that we can proceed. There's a lot of things being held up in the Fire Department because of the mayor dragging his heels on this, and I think it's time to start dragging our heels and moving forth on this particular issue. The Fire Chief's job, as we all know, is very important, and I don't think that we should be holding this up. I think we should be moving forward as quickly as possible. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Have a request for a light order at 1068 Slade Street.
Motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on February 21st, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be granted leave to withdraw. This is with regard to the semi-annual inspection of smoke alarms.
That wasn't unanimous.
Motion to adopt, committee's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I said unanimously.
I think Councilor Seat 6 has a question.
Did you say unanimously?
I did.
I believe that Councilor in seat one voted against that. I don't know if...
It's mistaken.
No.
You voted for...my apologies.
You're talking about the fire alarm?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that...
That's not the real estate.
My apologies.
This is the ordinance.
My apologies.
The Committee on Real Estate, at a meeting held on February 28th, voted four ayes, one nay, to recommend that the accompanying resolution and proposals be granted leave to withdraw. This is in regard to the Belial School.
Motion to adopt, committee's report. Second.
Seat one opposed. I guess I lost that one. I lost that vote.
You lost.
All in favor?
Seat two opposed.
Seat one and two opposed.
I apologize, I thought that...
Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on February 28th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying loan order be granted leave to withdraw.
Motion.
Motion. So, may...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam President, we have a two-minute recess for...to obtain some signatures.
As not to waste any time, while we have a two-minute recess for people to sign, I placed one of these on everyone's desk. It's relative to the schools. We'll be going to the schools every Saturday, starting on March 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, 31st, and April 14th. I've given Mike Holtzman from the Herald a copy as well. From 9:00 to 11:30, we'll be doing two schools a week. 9:00 to 11:30, to 10:30, will be nonprofits. Bring identification of a nonprofit group, and if there's something you could utilize for your program, feel free. From 11:00 to 1:00, it will be the general public. People can come in and purchase desks, chairs, anything that is in the school, perhaps a school that you attended, a school that has some significance to you. The first two that we're going to be doing is Osborne and NB Borden, that'll be this Saturday, followed by Belial and Healy, Fowler and Cornell, DeVall and Dubuque, Lincoln and Wixson, and Laura Lake and Sylvia. Hopefully, Mr. Zarek, who's here from WSAR, will also do some promo work on this for us, as well as Mr. Holtzman, who is here from the Herald News and always graces us with helping the city in writing his column as often as he can. So, I thank you both, gentlemen, for your assistance.
And Madam President?
Councilor Pullen.
I just wanted to say, you've done an excellent job with coordinating the efforts to dispose of the surplus property in many of these schools. I heard from a lot of nonprofits that they're very pleased that they've been able to go through the schools to look at the surplus property and the furniture. It's benefited many of them, and I know you put a lot of work and time into the efforts, and I want to thank you for all of your hard work.
You're welcome, and I've received help from a number of my colleagues, and I appreciate that as well. But we're here to do a job. We said we were going to roll up our sleeves and do it, and by gosh, that's what we're doing, and I thank you all. Not something I can do alone, so thank you.
Excellent job, Madam Clerk.
And if I may, I just want to add, we've even stopped some nonprofits from taking too much stuff.
We have. There was a gentleman from New Bedford, and I had, you know, my colleague, Councilor Kamara, came to the attic, and he and I made sure that this gentleman did not take anything else and left. So, I thank you. So, we've all done our...all done our part.
Why, from New Bedford, did he ever think he had the right?
Well, I think it was a ball of confusion. Sorry, I just saw The Temptation Saturday night, and that came to my mind. The name of a song. Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk, Madam President, while we're on that subject, I was asked a question, I don't know the answer to it, but I have to ask it now. If someone is carrying furniture outside or in the building, and they get injured walking down the steps because there's something that spilled there, who is liable? I understand we want to get rid of the furniture. I don't want to discourage anyone from taking it, but should the city carry it outside the door? I mean, I saw some elderly women, some elderly men carrying tables and chairs, and they weren't...and I had to help a couple because I felt bad for them, but, I mean, who is liable? Is the city liable if someone gets...
Well, actually, that's a great question, Councilor Kamara. I'm glad you asked it, because in doing these cleanups, before you enter the school, you have to sign a liability that the city is not responsible. Also, there have been volunteers from the city. Victor, who's in the audience tonight, for example, is one of those such volunteers who has graciously come down to the schools to assist people in carrying their items. Everything that we're doing on these Saturday intervals at school is on a cash and carry basis. You pay and take.
Are you saying that the forms are there?
The forms will be there, and people have to sign the forms before entering the school, because you're right, we don't want anyone to get hurt. And in some of the schools, because of pipes bursting, because some of the pipes have been robbed, because of varied situations, the floor has risen, so you do need to be careful in some of the schools. So, yes, to protect the city, I spoke with attorney attorneys, and that is something that we're going to be doing, but thank you, that's a great question. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Could be as-is. Enter at your own risk.
As was.
Madam...
Go ahead.
Madam President, the last two items are the ordinances for passage through...to be ordained. One is the miscellaneous traffic, and the second is police protection for traffic flow.
Motion.
Roll call.
I'm sorry?
Can you repeat the last one, the traffic to be ordained?
The first one was passage...this is now for passage to be ordained.
And the traffic?
The final passage.
The traffic.
Miscellaneous traffic. Councilor Kamara?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Dennis?